Good evening, this is the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three of the City Rockport City Council. I ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance if you'd stand and join with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed the speaker's card located on the table in the back of the training room of the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins, or written comments received by four P. M. on the day of the meeting on an agenda item or any subject matter will be read or summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace as prohibited by law shall be caused for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. I have two cards. First one is from Patrick Kane.
Hi, I'm Patrick Kane, eleven twenty-three East Cedar Street, Rockport. Good evening, Mayor, council. During the last council meeting, the city attorney and city manager stated the following time limits apply when a person wishes to address council: up to three minutes per speaker and thirty minutes for all speakers. This is incorrect. The city's Code of Ordinances lists five opportunities for public participation: citizens to be heard, consent agenda items, agenda items not on consent agenda, workshops and public hearing. The thirty-minute time limit is prescribed only for citizens to be heard in workshops, not for the other three. To avoid any confusion, let me read directly from section two dash thirty-one of the ordinance, which states, "The total time allotted for all citizens to be heard during the citizens to be heard shall be limited to thirty minutes." The thirty-minute time limit is not applicable to consent agenda items and public hearings, and if you read their separate sections in the ordinance, you will not see this time limit mentioned. The second point I want to make is the recent practice capping the total amount of time a member of the public has to address all items on the agenda. It is neither reasonable nor stated in the city's Code of Ordinances. The city's ordinance allows a person to speak up to three minutes on each agenda item and is well established by past practice. I don't take issue with the mayor soliciting all public input at the beginning of the meeting. That's his right for the Robert's Rules of Order. I do take issue with the city denying the public the rights afforded to us within the city's Code of Ordinances. The city needs to, one, remove the thirty-minute time limit on agenda item input, and, two, allow a person to speak three minutes on each agenda item they choose to address. During the last meeting, y'all talked about updating the Code of Ordinances, but these are the rules we have now. So until you change the rules, we need to follow the rules that are in the Code of Ordinances. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and city council, and I have a handout for you based on what I'm going to speak on. So I'm going to hand one to the city secretary. May I hand it to my council member? Thank you. I want to speak on the same topic that Mr. Kane spoke on. The reason that we have to keep talking on this and we can't talk on agenda items is because sometime in August, August twenty-fourth, I believe, an announcement was made that everything would be put to the beginning of the meeting as far as citizen comment and citizens to be heard and on agenda items. This was a change from previous procedure, and it caught, it seemed to catch Mayor Jarrow off guard, too. September, I believe, fourteen, Mr. Hutt came to speak on the budget and another agenda item, and he was told he had to do it all at the beginning of the meeting. This is all on video. Everyone can go see it. He got a little flustered, but Mayor Jarrow and the city manager and the city secretary seemed to have some conflict because Jeff Hutt said, "Well, what do I get? Three minutes for each?" And you said yes, Mayor, that he did. He got three minutes for each, which would have been in line with your authority to put all the citizen comments plus agenda items to the beginning of the meeting. But the city manager and the city secretary cut you off and corrected you and said, "No, he gets three minutes total, and that is it for all agenda items." And he signed up to speak on two, I believe, that night. This, from the very beginning, this whole process of changing how citizens' comments are handled and the order of business at your city council meetings has been way off. You say we have a citizen participation form that only gives you about ninety seconds worth of input. So that's insufficient right there. And then, as Mr. Kane so well pointed out, there are five distinct periods. It's in your handout. In the Code of Ordinances, section two thirty-one, C., items one, two, three, four, five, that give different times and different types of meetings for the citizens to speak. Why you changed it, I've already addressed that. I disagree with it. I believe you have some serious problems here. The Attorney General has said that you cannot discriminate against certain viewpoints, and there's been a lot of discussion about that as far as not allowing citizens to be heard amongst the city council. I went to every single charter review commission meeting. I spent so much time because you are violating not only my rights, but the rights of everyone in this city to speak on agenda items. If I wanted to speak on another agenda item tonight, I would be out of luck. My time is almost up, and this is not right. This is against your Code of Ordinance, and it's also against the Attorney General.
Did she hear us? She's got her thumb up. Good, there we go. Ward three?
Here.
Ward four?
Here.
Mayor, here. Consent agenda, do I have any discussion on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion? I will, before we vote. Before we vote, then, before we, we can take a motion, but I have two things I have to read before we vote. So I'll do it now, and we'll see if we have a motion. Item number seven, deliberate an act on second and final reading of an ordinance amending Article Four of the City of Rockport zoning ordinance, number ten twenty-seven, by changing the zoning of land located at four oh seven West Market Street, also known as Doughty and Mathis Block Two Hundred, lots one through three, the westerly portion, and lots nine through eleven, the easterly portion, Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, from R. One, which is first single-family dwelling district, to B. One, general business district, to allow the use of a new shop, repealing all ordinances and conflict therewith and providing for severability and providing an effective date. That is item number seven. Item number eight, deliberate an act on second and final reading of an ordinance ordering a special election and establishing procedures for said election to be held on Saturday, May sixth, twenty twenty-three. The special elections will be for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the city proposed charter amendments for their consideration, establishing early voting locations and polling places for the special election, providing other matters relating to the special election, providing for publication of the notice of the special election, providing for severability, finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law and establishing an effective date.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? I have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion or question? Call for vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Next item on the agenda, item number fourteen, deliberate an act on the first reading of a proposed ordinance authorizing a prorata reimbursement to Eric and Janet Prem, Michael E. and Cynthia S. Glick, Gary and Lydia A. Newman, Ebbett, I. and Thomas Scott Johnson for development of sanitary sewer main utility line affecting the property and property owners along Ocean Drive, known as Aransas County Appraisal District property, ID number six four six six six, six four six six seven, and six five three five six, Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, providing for prorata payments from benefited property owners who request to connect to the sewer utilities during the reimbursement period, providing for developer to be reimbursed from prorata funds received and providing an effective date and a termination date.
The request from the people named in the caption there requesting a prorata share of the main sewer line that they paid to have installed. All the backup information is in the packet. I am responsible for putting that information together and then developing a prorata agreement that had been developed by legal counsel years ago, so I copy and paste, and it's all still legal. That agreement is attached behind this ordinance. The notice of this was sent out to all property owners involved. These people requesting it, as well as the, it was three property owners, one, two, three, that will be affected, and I haven't had any responses or anything back from anyone saying they were not in agreement or anything like that. As these come on, it's a seven-year limit, so if these three properties do not choose to tap in within the seven-year limit, if year eight hits, then they're not responsible for paying their share. They come on with the normal impact and tap fees. But there is a seven-year limit where they would be subject to paying the other people back. And the city does that.
Council, any questions? No questions, so I have a motion?
I move to approve item fourteen as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion or debate? Now, I call for vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Deliberate an act, number fifteen, deliberate an act to appoint members to the Parks and Leisure Services Advisory Board.
As you can see in the agenda packet, we have three vacancies in the Parks and Leisure Services Board. They have had a, so that means that there's a quorum, there are seven members, that means there's a quorum, it's four, and they have had a hard time meeting that. So I put this on there. All the applicants that have applied are from the Ward two, I think I remember that right. So I didn't know what y'all wanted to do, but I put it on there for open discussion. We actually had one applicant, but she was from Outland County, and so that doesn't work that way. So you can appoint one, you can appoint two, you can appoint three, you can put it back and seek more applications. It's up to your discretion.
Right. Council?
I would just like to put out, but I did put out out there a field when I wanted to have a participant on this committee, and I did not get any applicants or any interest. So I understand we like to have a round, you know, with each over words, but I can't do that if no one's applying. So I did put it out there as available.
I did put it out there, too, and got no response.
Thank y'all for trying. Can't afford to join the boards. We wanted representation from all the wards, but if we can't get it, then we can't get it. They need to have a quorum, they need to have participation, need to have their meetings and conduct their business, so.
It's always good to have good new faces, and I think the three applicants that had applied, they are, you know, they do a lot in our community, and they had good backgrounds. So I think I agree with them. It was my only issue was having the wards be a little bit more spread out, but I'm okay with what is on there right now. So I make a motion to approve the appointed members for the Parks and Leisure Service Advisory Board.
Second. Any further questions before we vote? I believe I need to read these names into the record.
Yes, sir.
We have Josh Dowling of one oh two North Santa Clara Drive, Elsa Gonzalez of eleven thirteen Egrit Lane, and Shelley Schubert Stekler of thirty-three fifty-two Loop Seventeen Eighty-One, Rockport. I have a motion, a second. Any further questions? Call for vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number sixteen, deliberate an act on possible approval of amendment to the existing Republic Services contract, extending it for one year until July thirty-first, twenty fourteen.
Mayor, council, you know, we have our Republic contract is coming up for expiration this year. You guys asked me to ask if they would explore a one-year extension. They've agreed to do that without raising the CPI on the residential portion of their trash removal. So the contract is in here. We have negotiated that. If you would like to ask any questions, I'm happy to do that.
All right. Mayor, I'd like to table this item and give direction to the city manager to negotiate with Republic Services for a contract up to the five-year extension, also allowing for a neighborhood opt-out clause in that. Postpone, sorry, not table, postpone. Do you want me to do it again, or is that okay?
No, you're fine.
All right. I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on this?
I have a question. I just want to make sure I understand what the motion means, okay? Is that instead of doing the one-year extension that we all talked about, instead we're going to do up to five-year, which I don't like five-year, by the way, with opt-in, opt-outs, and blah, blah, blah? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
As opposed to doing just a one-year and then coming back again in a few months and then going for the five, or, you know, a four or five-year? Let's just let the city manager negotiate it now. It's my thoughts on this. Let the city manager negotiate on it now, try to get us the best deal.
I amend the motion to no more than four years. Do you accept her amendment?
Sorry. Second, we got two amendments so far. So I have a motion, a second, for the second amendment, right?
First amendment.
We've got one here and one there.
One amendment on the floor was Katie for the four years, and then Andrea said that.
Okay, so number one, which we read.
Right, and then there was an amendment, which was Katie's. I thought, no, Brad tabled. That was a motion to postpone.
Yeah.
But I amended the postponement to be the direction to be four years instead of five.
So we've got to do this one, then this one, then the first one, right?
I don't know. Mr. Brown, councilmember Brown's motion was to postpone and negotiate up to five years to allow the city manager to do that. Councilmember Jackson amended his motion to say postpone and negotiate up to four years. So that was the first and only amendment, which was second. You vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the original motion.
We have amendment from Katie, amendment. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further questions on her motion, four years negotiation? If there is no question for the comment, we vote, I'll call for vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Now, we go back here. We have a motion to postpone the vote until after the city manager continues negotiation with Republic to take care of the contract deal.
With the opt.
That's in it, four years.
With the max of four years.
With the opt-out of neighborhood.
Right, that's correct.
I have a motion in a second.
Call the question.
Any further discussion or debate?
Mayor, I have a question.
Danielle has a question.
Danielle has a question.
Oh, okay, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you. I didn't hear you say anything. Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. I'd like for some clarity regarding the neighborhood opt-out. That seems to be a pretty vague or broad statement. Does somebody want to explain what that means?
In my thoughts, what I want is the opportunity for some neighborhoods to get other services, you know, more than once a week services, valet services, whatever they need, especially some areas in Ward three are a little busier during the summer times, and once a week, trash service may not be the best for them. So the neighborhood trash service, what I would, what I'm envisioning is like an HOA contracting with another vendor or something like that.
Danielle, we'll have to define that neighborhood opt-out through the process. So when I bring that back to you, it will have a defined parameter for a neighborhood opt-out. Okay, thank you. That helps clarify. I guess, you know, we could go to a vote, but I'm a little taken back by the change in direction that I was, you know, hopeful to be able to spend some time to better understand what the needs are of the constituents in Ward two with regards to things like recycling and whatnot. I thought we had discussed a reasonable path forward to solicit community input. So anyways, it is what it is, and I'll yield my, any further questions, sir?
Okay. Anyone else? So we have a motion and a second from Katie. Do you call for vote on her motion? No, we're calling on Brad's. I'm sorry, we took care of yours. We're just taking care of Brad's. And we had a motion, second, thirty.
I second his.
Call for vote, I'm sorry.
Call question.
Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
No.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Passes four to one. City manager report.
In your packet, you have the, what we're calling the Charter Amendment FAQ. I've put it together, it's every amendment, and why is this potentially on the ballot? Factual, not position on? And unless anybody has any major changes to this or problems with it, we will驳 it.
Very good.
I'm good. All right, well, it will go on the website, we'll put the links in it, and push it out. We are going to make a video with you guys.
We're going to make a video. I'll send you your scripts tomorrow, and then we'll start scheduling times for y'all to appear.
All right.
Since this is going on the web and everything, this is what, to be neutral, this is what we can share with the constituents, you know? Whenever they ask questions or something, this is what we need to.
Neutral factual answer.
Yes, truthful, factual, neutral, got you.
Any else?
No, sir, I have a budget item on here, but I don't have any budget to report.
All right. Item eighteen, report from council. Ward one?
I've got nothing.
What? No way.
Believe it or not?
No way.
Believe it or not?
Ward two?
First, I want to send my sincere apologies for being absent again today. I had a pre-arranged travel for a conference work-related, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to dial in and still participate. On January twenty-third, we did have a Parks and Leisure, or we attempted to have a Parks and Leisure Services Advisory Board. Of course, we were not able to make a quorum, and that meeting was canceled, so thank you all for getting that board filled back up and looking forward to some good discussions with our new members. There was also on February sixth, I dialed in for the Stormwater Floodplain Management Advisory Committee. I thought a presentation regarding the Blue Corridor concept was insightful and look forward to hearing more from that, and I'll yield to the mayor for any further comments as our primary representative. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay. Ward three?
This weekend, actually probably starting this week, big things down at Memorial Park. You got Little League Soccer starting, you got Little League Baseball tryouts, and I'm going to thank the Parks Department for getting the fields ready and getting everything ready down there. It's going to be a busy, busy, busy week at Memorial Park, so if you've got anything else going on down there, just stay away because the traffic's going to be, it's going to be fun. And then also on Saturday, Saturday at noon is the USA versus Canada baseball game, softball game, that they have, supports Rockport Fulton Little League. It's down there at the park. Concho Street Drainage Project is back up and running. That's more in Katie's ward, sorry, but.
I'm sorry. I didn't know that.
So if you have some traffic or you need to go down to the police station or sheriff's office, just be mindful of some potential delays down there. Attended the state of the county today, and Judge Garza did a great job, and it was good to get to see some people out there. I think that's about all I have for y'all.
Ward four?
Also, attended the state of the county of Garza today, and Judge Garza did a great job, and we appreciate him coming out and speaking to the citizens, and we enjoyed listening to him. Also, I'd say, like, me and the mayor next week are going to Texas Clean Coast all-day event, where we're going to talk to them about some changes, maybe in the Tulley Creek drainage area, and just getting more information how we can help, you know, the whole community with our drainage issues and how we just drain into our bays and everything, so hopefully that helps us. And also, the drainage project in the country club I read last Friday was at seventy percent, so we are getting there. We're very close, and hopefully in the next couple of months, we're going to be complete. That's about it for my word.
The Stormwater Drainage Committee, which meets monthly, met last week, and there is progress going on between the county, the city, the Nav District, and every other entity in Fulton, and working toward drainage problems that we all have as a community as opposed to as a city, a town, a county, Nav District, or whatever. So there's effort going on for everyone to work together to find answers to our drainage problems. As we have said before, there are a lot of people trying to move to our community, and if they need to do that, if they need places to live, we need to see that we're not putting people in floodplains and problems that are caused by lack of work on drainage issues that should have been dealt with before. So we're working on that as a community, and there's a lot of mutual cooperation going on there, and I appreciate that. City council will hold an executive session pursuant to provisions of chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with authority contained in section five five one point zero seven one, consultations with attorney seeking advice from attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, and in a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Burnside Services, Inc., Concho Street Drainage Project, and the Barack Kamar. Burnside Services, Inc., Concho Street Drainage Project and the Barak Kamar Patel and Koki Lakumari Patel versus the City of Rockport. Also, Section five five one point zero seven four, personnel matters deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Parks and Leisure Services Director. It is seven o'clock exactly and we are in executive session.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to you all about a few things.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to you all about a few things.